Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin our meetings as we always do with public audience. We invite members to come up and speak for up to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak at public audience? Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Now that Mike Payne has declared his run for First Selectman, I would like to have the Board of Ethics give an opinion on the conflicts of interest that might arise since he has contracts with the town. First Selectman Lisa Hevna has continued to say that she is not involved in land use, but she has no problem walking Mark Demming to the Planning Department with the ticket booth, plans, and Steve Mitchell, who has issues before the Planning and Zoning Commission, was this political. The senior center renovation to Eno Hall does not have a consensus and SCTV's placement in the basement of the library has become a political football. Six million dollars for the renovation should be withdrawn from the capital projects. First Selectman Lisa Hevna has given up the management of Simsbury Meadows to a private organization. Simsbury Performing Arts under the direction of Democratic Town Committee member Dave Ryan. The PAC under new contract has reduced their payment to the town for the use of the facility from $10,000 to $2,500, leaving the taxpayers unable to use the facility for many weekends and pay for in-kind services. The Simsbury Performing Arts has $73,028 in assets and is pleading poverty. Recently, a PAC subleased the town property to a private organization, SimsburyFleaMarket.com, where they charged $4 for an entry fee and no money from revenues went to the town. Many in-kind services were absorbed by the taxpayer and the use of the property was used for outside groups, limiting the use to the taxpayers. A PAC group has now been approved by Planning for a permanent facility near the playground, removing parking spaces and use for the public. First Selectman Lisa Hevna has used a log to hold a board in place on the triangle barn to mitigate blight. I am sure a homeowner would be fined for this attempt to conform. This is laughable. This air pistol that can be bought -- on April 24th, a person at Curtis Park called the police when she found a pistol on the bleachers. The police found the air pistol where it remains in the evidence room. This air pistol can be bought for around $65 and looks like a real pistol. Many parents purchase this pistol for their children since there are no age limits and no permits required. My cause for concern is the fact that children and adults can be using this air pistol in a public place. When the police are called for a child or adult with a pistol in a public place, they could lose their life since the police have seconds to determine the pistol pointed at them is real or an air pistol. Air pistols should be used on private property, not in public places, putting everyone in imminent danger. Parents must talk to their children about the use and danger of playing with air pistols. There were over 200 pistol permits processed from 2006 to the present. On February 24th, 2017, the police arrested Judge Gerard, a member of the Gerard family that owned Simscroft Deco, for discharge of firearm, carrying a gun without a permit, larceny, five, and many other charges. It is alleged that the gun was a training pistol. On March 29th, 2017, Judge Gerard was arrested by the central major crimes of burglary, larceny, criminal trespass, stealing firearm, among other charges. Charges are still pending while Judge remains in jail. August 24th, 2016, the current publisher of story, Non-Lethal Guns Stolen From State Police. During this timeframe, 2015 to August 2015, Simscroft Deco was hired to do a significant work at Medicom Gum Club, which is continuous to the state firing range. On August 2015, tree removal was done at the state firing range. It is alleged that there was an opportunity for surveillance and an opportunity for burglary at the state filing range while doing extensive work at Medicton Gum Club. Is Judge Gerard the only person with a trophy from the state range when 11 non-lethal weapons were stolen? Once again, I am bringing to your attention that the granite walk at the Simsbury War Memorial at the library remains with the sign Slippery When Wet and no action on trying to make it less slippery. When this was permanent -- when will this be permanently fixed? After reviewing the granite walk with a tribute to the honored dead, quote, "Here we mark the price of freedom," end quote, the word peaceful is missing an E. Did anyone edit this insert before it was finalized? Will this error be fixed before the memorial service? How can the Board approve a gift from CTEC Solar when they have not paid their taxes? They presently owe $44,000. Does First Selectman Lisa Hevna reward bad behavior? And is this political -- is this a political approval? All my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Simsbury.com forum topics, Twitter at Joan Coe, and news feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening, and I hope I get some resolve from my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Mr. Kalishman.
Thank you for allowing me to address the Board and the First Select person. I noticed according to the agenda that Memorial Day Parade is coming up, and I noticed a couple at the reception from the VFW. I didn't see anybody from the Legion. And then I noticed that we have a member here this evening that's a member of the VFW, and I might add, in giving him credence and quidows, he was very active in the fundraising for the monument, and he attributed to a lot of money that was raised. And like he said this evening, when I had a brief chat with him, he mentioned the fact that he didn't even want to involve yous in the town. He wanted all the veterans to pay for that monument down there. And in my opinion, that $200 that you're putting in your purse, I don't know how some of you can shave in the morning or wash dishes because it's not the right thing to do. And I certainly hope that when you have the parade, it's not going to be the same old same old with all the politicos up in front, and that parade goes, and then when the politicians decide to stop and shake hands, that the whole parade stops. And half of these politicians that are shaking hands and taking all the glory have never served. They don't know their right foot from their left, and in my opinion, the sacrifice that the fellas made, that who should be getting the credit, not the politician who leads the parade and wraps himself in the flag, i.e. John Hampton. And I go back when I first came to town, made a big issue of me, right? You had to go into my record, you had to see my war record, and when you saw it, you all fell down because there wasn't anything you could say about me. The only thing you could say about me is that I didn't take any guff from anybody, and maybe I had a scuffle or two. But that's the only thing -- but that's why I was liked, and that's why I'm here today, because I had a scuffle or two. And I haven't forgotten it yet, and those pimps that live up in Terriffill, I know who they are, and they can't shave in the morning either. Now, I'm adding to the Republicans' list. They had a little publicity, and granted, I get little or no publicity, and I'm not here to get publicity. I'm here to serve. And I will be a candidate, and I will be opposing the Republican ticket, and I will be opposing the Democratic ticket, and I will be running as First Selectman. And so, the thing here, and you still won't get it, and you don't get it, the 5th Congressional District, which Simsbury is a part of, is corrupt. And I'll debate anyone on this Board or anyone in the audience, right? And I'll go through their litany. Lisa Wilson-Foley, she's a member of the 5th Congressional District. She lives in Simsbury. John Rowland, he's in prison, member of the 5th Congressional District, right? Was in and out of Simsbury like you had lunch many a day here. And I can go through Donovan, the Democrat, the Democratic Speaker of the House, right? He didn't go to jail, but his whole campaign staff went to jail, and his campaign chairman, Brady, that poor guy, went five years to prison for corruption. And you can't tell me you're not involved in it because I know a little about politics. And when you put together congressional districts and you put together congressional candidates, what you do is you have a convention, and so many people are selected from Simsbury, and they go down and they select these crooks. And a lot of them, in my opinion, become part of the scam. They're in it for what they get out of it, not for what Simsbury gets out of it. And now, we'll go to the big scam.
Mr. Kalishman.
Felix de Greco.
Thank you.
Right. Well, naturally, Memorial Day, you don't want to talk about Felix de Greco.
Thank you.
He just made the sacrifice of his life. He gave his life for this country.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? We'll go with Susan in the Mark.
Good evening. Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I realized there was one more meeting before our electronic recycling this Saturday, so I wanted to remind you about it again, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Andy's Market. And when I was here last time, I forgot to pass out my party favors from the Brink Grange, which are individual seed pods with jalapeno plants in them. They're very easy. You just put them level with some soil and water it, and you will have a plant. If you don't like jalapenos, you'll still have a nice plant. But we will be giving these out at our electronic recycling event, as well as hopefully some cucumber peat pots that are quite similar. We have these available in Hartford at a free seed and book kiosk that we're maintaining near a community garden in Hartford, and we actually won the Connecticut State Grange Award for Community Partnership for that project. So I'd like to pass these out. You can feel free to take one.
Thank you.
And I hope to see you on Saturday. And these are now also available at the Simsbury Library, and they also have a seed exchange donation program. So this is a little advertisement for the Grange and also for the seed program at the library. I'll just, I don't even know where the camera is, but here's the flyer in case you don't see it, for our Grange event. I also wanted to mention that I know there's a carry-in, carry-out policy that will be discussed tonight, and I don't know a lot about it, but in general, I want to say that I support that. We had a cleanup at the Grange yesterday. I just want to say it was somewhat like an archaeological dig, both inside and out, and we still have more work to do. People were just dumping bags of trash, and I think in general, a culture of carry-in, carry-out promotes recycling of your trash versus recyclable items when you get home, promotes keeping our areas looking nice, and I think it's probably not realistic at all locations in town. I'm not sure if it's proposed for larger things like Memorial Field. I think it's probably not. There's a lot of trash that comes in, so I don't know exactly the details of the policy. But in general, I want to say that I support that, but I think we should even make it carry some in, carry more out, which would help us to get trash out of the woods. So I will pick up my party favors from Selectman Cook, and I'll pass them around to the members of the audience in case you would like a plant as well.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort.
I'm really proud to know if there's going to be a frost tonight.
Okay, Mark.
There's not.
I think, I thought it was 39, 39 degrees.
Okay, because I was going to run home and cover them.
Yeah, we should be okay. [laughter]
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Aronstein, and my wife and I have lived at 82 Old Meadow Plain Road for the past 45 years. For full disclosure, I'm on the Aging and Disability Commission for a number of years, Town's Technology Task Force. I was actually on the original one in the 1990s, and I'm also, more recently, a library trustee. I'm also on the SCTV Board. Speaking of which, for your next meeting, you should see hi-def cameras over here, and if perchance you see a cameraman with a portable camera, I'm in deep trouble. It's very seldom that I've talked to public audience, primarily to sponsor SCTV, I think. I think that the Boards, Commissions, and Town Employees do a great job. I'm here tonight because of the chaos surrounding the state budgets and deficits and their impact on Simsbury. I purposefully use the word deficits because this is a multi-year issue. It's really scary. My wife and I have been attempting to follow the state budget process without any success. At this time, we feel that the town needs to be extremely conservative with expenditures over the next few years. The Board of Selectmen's approved budget has capital expenditures netting about $30 million for 2018. Major parts of this are the Henry James Phase III expansion and the Eno Senior Community Center improvements. Our suggestion is that these be pushed off for several years, at least until the impact of the state's budget problems on the town are understood. Together, these avoid about $25 million off the $30 million in bonding that is planned for next year. We suggest that the other capital projects also be reviewed. If these two items do go to referendum, to the best of our memories, for the first time since 1972, we intend to vote no on a capital item, on capital items. I believe that many of the citizens of this town have similar feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close the portion of our meeting for public audience. I did want to mention that we employ Robert's Rules of Order, which do require a level of decorum, which we impose on all aspects of our meeting except for public audience. We waive that in the interest of First Amendment, but there is no name-calling or questioning of motivations in our regular meetings. So we will begin with our action items.
Your report first? Or presentations first?
Oh, presentations, I forgot. John. We have John here from our Veterans Association. Thank you, Elaine, for reminding me.
Well, stand up. I'd like to introduce John Lamb as well. John and I are co-sponsors of the, are co-leaders of the Memorial Day Observation Committee. So this is John Lamb, John Fox, and we're both members of the Veterans of Farm Wars in Simsbury post-1926. So I asked to meet with the Board today just to, or be put on the agenda, to brief the town and the Board of Selectmen on what our agenda is for the Memorial Day Parade and the observances for both Terriffill and Simsbury. First, I'd like to say that the committee, just to make sure that the town understands, the committee is made up of, and has been in the past, made up of members of the VFW and the American Legion. And these are the gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen that essentially put the work in to plan and conduct the parade and the observances that follow the parade. So, and this year, there are six, three members of the American Legion, three members of the VFW, and we also have two, one volunteer and a member of the Terriffill Village Association that we added. So we've reached beyond, and I'll talk about that a little bit, we've reached beyond just the veterans to help. First, let me give you an overview, and then I'll get into what's new. Realize that this is the 100th anniversary of the Memorial Day Parade in Simsbury, so it's an important event. Just an overview, the Terriffill Parade steps off as it usually does at 9:00 a.m., and the service will follow at St. Bernard Cemetery, as it usually does. Simsbury Parade steps off at 1:30, and the service follows at Simsbury Veterans Memorial, which will be a first this year. We felt it was a good use of the memorial and a good honor for the memorial site and give us something that was different to highlight the 100th. Route 10 will be closed until after the service, which will be roughly between 3:30 and 4:00. So it'll be closed between Owens Brook and Drake Hill Road. Eaglewood at Route 10 and the lower parking lot for the library will also be closed. The library will not be open. It will be open for the facilities, in other words, for the restrooms, and that's it. There will be 350 seats placed on Eaglewood. For those that came to the dedication, it'll be a similar arrangement, except we will not be putting seating on Route 10 because we want to open Route 10 as soon as possible. What's new? So those are pretty much, there's a couple of new items in there, but that's pretty much the overview for the parades and the service following the parades. What's new for this year to commemorate the 100th year anniversary, the service held at Simsbury Veterans Memorial with seating for attendees. That's a new item. We haven't really had attendee seating before. We hope to, that we have more participants than the 350 seats that we're going to provide, so we do want to open it up and make sure people come to the event at the end of the parade. I don't know if you've seen them, but thanks to Jerry Toner and the help of Main Street Partnership, there are banners up and down Route 10 that are posters from 1917, Memorial Day 1917, and they're up and down, there'll be 16 of them up and down Route 10. I noticed one was in front of Eno. I don't know, two in front of Eno, and I don't know whether the rest have gotten up today or not, but Jerry has them all. Ice cream will be handed out at the, following the service at the memorial, as well as in Terriffill. Terriffill's always done this. They've had ice cream following the event. We want to do it in Simsbury as well. That became a little bit of a bigger task than we thought, but thanks to the Freemasons, we will be having some ice cream after the parade up on the lawn, the library lawn. The DAR, and this is a special one, the DAR will have a float featuring posters and costumes from 1917, and they will be leading the parade. And the marshal will be riding on the float. There will actually be three marshals, we hope. Those will be the senior veterans in town. We hope it'll be more than three, but at least three. And they'll be playing music from 1917. They'll also, I think we've sent a note to the police station that they will be decorating the float in the town parking lot on Sunday, since the parking will be closed, will be decorated because we need a short route to get over to Owens Brook. It'll be the Fleming Farm Trolley will be the basis for the float, and it will have the senior DAR members as well as the senior veterans riding on the float. We reached out to other civic organizations for assistance this year. That includes Terriffill Village Association, and Terriffill helped with the coordination. We felt that they ought to be allowed to put their stamp on the parade and give a voice to their parade. It's really their parade, so it is Terriffill's parade. It's the veterans of Terriffill, but we felt that the TVA ought to be helping out, and they did step up. Abigail Phelps, DAR, did the float, and Debbie did fantastic research on Memorial Day 1917 and the history of Memorial Day in Simsbury, and she's going to share that research with us as the guest speaker this year. So she will be the guest speaker, and we'll talk pretty much in the front end. After Lisa's, she will talk, be the speaker, talking about, no, Lisa, you'll give your normal proclamation, welcome everybody. Hopefully, you haven't responded, but I think you will.
Happy to do so.
The Freemasons, obviously, with ice cream. Westminster for mailing letters to the vets. Simsbury Main Street Partnership helped out with the banners and the posters. They're putting the posters out among the town, around the town in their storefronts. Another, what's new for this year, and this was a special request by the member of the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectman actually, was that we plan an alternative for weather. So this year, Trinity Church will be the alternative for the service in case of bad weather, in case we have to cancel, instead of canceling the service. It will be held at Trinity Church, and Eno Hall will be the location for service in case, again, in case of inclement weather. And I told you about Debbie Payne. Is there any questions?
First of all, thank you so much for your efforts. People may not know, but this is really organized by volunteers completely. Town offers their assistance to you, but it's definitely led by you, and we're very happy to support you. The Board of Selectmen, as you know, supported you in some financing, but not all, and so I appreciate all the efforts you did.
A significant amount of it.
And we're very honored to do so because we appreciate that all that you do, and we're very grateful that you're members of our.
And you've been donating to it since 1908, in case you didn't know.
I did not. Thank you. Any other questions?
Debbie has a lot more to tell you that.
I'm looking forward to it. That's Debbie Payne.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. So we'll go on. I'll do an update of my First Selectman's Report. There's a slightly new format. We're trying to make it a little more readable, and there are some, there's now one. Thank you. Thank you, Vanna. Let's start with the budget update. I wanted to let folks know that there will be a public hearing held by the Board of Finance on May 16th at 5:45 p.m. in the main meeting room of Town Hall. Please come and share your opinion on this year's budgets, both the towns and Board of Beds. They'll be taking comment on it, and Capitol as well. I put in my report because I thought it was worth putting in twice. Simsbury ranks the number-one best suburb to live in Connecticut by Niche.com. You'll see that twice because some things are worth repeating, so we're very excited about that. For those who were not here at 5:30, I know the Board joins me in congratulating our hometown heroes this year, who are Len Lanza and Ika Scully, and we'll send out a separate press release tomorrow with the details so that everyone in the community can see the reasons. But Len, obviously, for his work on the memorial and veterans projects and programs, and Ika for her work at the Historical Society, and both have been very active in a number of organizations throughout town. So congratulations to them both, and Ika, we hope you are feeling better soon. Coming up on May 10th, I know Cheryl is very excited about this, and Chris, the Community for Care is hosting the Harlem Rockets versus the Simsbury Dream Team at Simsbury High School at 6:00 p.m. That's May 10th, for a night of basketball fun and information about community health resources in Simsbury. Suggested donations are $2 per person or a non-perishable food item at the door, and we hope to see it there. It should be really fun. National Bike Month is on its way. This year's First Selectman's Report has a picture of all those who joined us in the Board of Selectmen ride, and I'm happy to report there were no injuries this year. And ice cream awaited us at the conclusion, so a lot of fun. Veterans and their families are invited to learn about veterans' benefits from a liaison from the Hartford Healthcare. At Home will speak about veterans' benefits on May 11th at the library from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. We encourage you to attend that if you or someone you know is interested in veterans' benefits. Thank you to John and John for the update on the memorial parades. We're very much looking forward to that. And John, I didn't check with you in advance, but I have your name as the contact for questions. Thank you. If you missed it last time, Simsbury has a Simsbury Community Calendar. We encourage people to place their events on that. It's on the front page of our website. Melissa Appleby helped organize that along with Main Street Partnership. Very pleased to offer that. But John, if you have not posted Memorial Day Parade, please put that on the Simsbury calendar. The library continues their commemoration of the 100th anniversary of America's entry into World War I with a series of programming at the library, and I see some members of the library Board of Trustees here today, and I want to recognize you and thank you for your efforts on that. The Simsbury Triathlon is coming on May 21st at 11:00 a.m. The Talcott Mountain Music Festival at Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts has announced their season, and you can find that information online or in my First Selectman's Report. The Drought Watch, we are not sure if it's still in effect. Waiting to hear from Jennifer Katanis to get definitive information on that. In terms, new on the First Selectman's Report, we have an update on town projects. I asked Jeff Shea and Tom Roy to put together a list of things you may be seeing around town or things that people have asked. town or things that people have asked questions about. So it talks about the Simsbury Farms pool improvements, open space planning improvements. You're going to see some work done at the entrance to Ethel Walker Woods this summer. New sign in the entrance. Concept plan for One Old Bridge property is underway, and they'll be starting permitting on that. So there's a lot of work in the office. You might not necessarily see it in public, but that's actually quite a bit of work. Multi-use trail connections. If you have not yet seen, Public Works is currently resurfacing a 2.6-mile section of the Greenway multi-use trail between Iron Horse and Granby Line, and that's going to be beautiful when that's completed. Thanks to Jerry as well for assisting with that, and Jeff Shea. Right now, the town is exploring, or finishing grant funding for the two sections of the multi-use trail. They are in the process of being finalized, and they will offset taxpayer money to construct the areas of the trail from 315 to Curtis Park and from Terrifield to Bloomfield. So we're excited about that and like to recognize Jeff Shea and Jerry Toner are here, and also Tom Roy, who are working on that. So it's, it's, it's interesting that summer is when we see all the work being done, and it's kind of nice to get an idea of what's out there. Mr. Roy, by the next First Selectmen's Report, will have his list of roads that are anticipated to be paved this year. He is hesitant to put it out, as am I, because we do not know what's happening at the state level. So when it does go out, it will be with the caveat that all is funded at the state level and that the world has not collapsed. Economic development, I did want to make folks aware that Deepwater Wind is hosting an open meeting on their proposed Tobacco Valley Solar Project, which is between Hoskins and County Road. It's a very large project. It actually doesn't go through local planning because it's that big. It goes through the State Siting Council, so.
And I, I'm sorry, Lisa.
Can you just, let me finish?
Yeah, it's a question on this project. Sorry.
That's okay. And we invite people to come to Henry James Memorial School from 6:30 to 8:30. The project, Eileen Kenny is, will be doing the presentation with lots of representatives from the Deepwater Wind. They'll answer questions about economic input, what the project is like, landscaping, value to the town. It should be a very informative project, and I really do encourage all residents to attend this. This is not housing. I want to congratulate Main Street Partnership on receiving accreditation. They received national accreditation from the Main Street of America, which is a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Simsbury Main Street demonstrated exemplary commitment to historical preservation, community revitalization through the Main Street Four Point approach. So this is a very big honor, and we're very pleased to acknowledge them and recognize them. Wednesday night is business night at Simsbury Library. Again, the Library Board of Trustees, lots of great programmings and events to support our local businesses, including the ABCs of selling your business, of buying a business, and five critical tips to solve your revenue and operational challenges so you can maximize your profit. The library is also offering, in coordination with the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Hartford Score, a program on compete to win, how to build a relationship with your customers, and that is coming up. The rest are, are updates on current projects. They're mostly the same. We'll highlight to you when there's a major change. So I'll take questions now from the board.
I just wanted to clarify, because I've had a number of questions. Deepwater Wind is the name of the company. We're talking about a solar project. It is not a wind.
That's correct.
Project. I think there was some confusion with some people when they saw the name, so I just wanted to clarify that for the public's interest.
Yes, the name of the project is Tobacco Valley Solar Project. That's what they're calling it, but it is done by the owners, Deepwater Wind. So they will have a representative there to talk about that. Moving on, we will go to Action Island. May have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $1,360.97.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Item B is a referral of the 2018 capital projects to the Planning Commission for Connecticut General Statute Section 824 referral. This is something we do every year and is required by state statute. The capital projects previously approved by the Board of Selectmen is reflected in your packets. You have the attachments of what we've approved. For the Board of Selectmen-approved budget must be referred to Planning Commission in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 8 to S24. And we're going to go ahead and read those projects. I understand that our budget is not complete. We're going to refer them all anyway. Even if there are changes, it is best to do the referral. They can take them off the list if something changes in the interim. So it is a Simsbury Farms sink and rink and pool improvements for $950,000, park improvements for $235,000, open space planning improvements, that's $150,000, most of which is going to the Betty Hudson. Townwide park master plan, $102,000, streetlight purchase and lighting improvements for $400,000. Iron Horse Boulevard playground renovation, $298,000. Planning and conservation, POCD land use studies, $35,000. Regulation update, $65,000. Finance security upgrades, $150,000. Senior community center, $5,800,000. Bridge improvements, $805,000. Cold storage facility, police and Department of Public Works shared facility, $380,000. Dam evaluations and repairs, $75,000. Town facilities master plan, $400,000. Various drainage improvements, $125,000. Library interior park and parking renovations, $584,500. Library lower level improvements, $906,048. 36 Drake Hill Road dike analysis, $75,000. Phosphorus removal analysis, $150,000. Hayes Road pump station upgrade, $45,000. Terrifield area sewer repairs, $100,000. Water pollution control plan update, $100,000. Henry James Memorial School renovation phase three, $22,825,000. Simsbury High School tennis court replacement, $740,000. And that is it. Our town engineer, Jeff Shea, is here to answer any questions that the board may have, but this is our fairly standard procedural motion that we take at this time of year.
So I make a motion to refer the capital projects previously approved by the Board of Selectmen to the Planning Commission in accordance with 8-24.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We move on to discuss and have possible action on the fiscal year 2018 budget. Pass this out to you, Cheryl. As you may recall, at their April 18th meeting, the Board of Finance requested recommended reductions from the Boards of Selectmen and Education totaling $1 million. This board's share is $200,000. At our last board meeting, I presented the board with two options. There was a slight error on one of the numbers. I think we had 5.3 million. It was actually 5.5 million. So we made that correction this time. Sean, did I get that right? Okay. The two options that I presented then and that you have before you today, and of course we open it up to other options, are one, a senior center phase-in, so we would change the CIP, fund $300,000 in fiscal year 18 for upgrades to the kitchen and bathrooms, and then fund 5.5 million in the senior center major construction two years out. By doing that, in other words, only approving 300,000 in fiscal year 18, that decreases the projected fiscal year 19 issuance and increases the projected fiscal year 21 issuance by 5.5 million. This frees up additional debt service capacity in the early years of the debt service planning model, which in turn enables the town to pay cash for more projects and reduce the debt service percentage for fiscal year 18 and all future years to 6.4, 6.42%. So the question has been asked, would that create a cliff? It does not, because we will reduce the line to 6.42%. And that reduction would generate approximately $202,000 in savings, meaning the Board of Finance's request that we give them a recommendation while still having a CIP plan that fits under the guideline. The town always has the option to return to a 6.7% or a 7% debt service funding at any time in the future and may need to if additional capital needs arise. But I wanted to put that out there. It's a little confusing how moving out 5.5 million saves money in the fiscal year 18, but it does. I gave you the explanation, but it is fairly complicated, so I did want to give members of this board to ask any questions about that option with Mr. Kimball, who's our Director of Finance.
So I do appreciate and understand the accounting of it. I guess, to your point, and it's a good one, we can certainly reduce the debt service line to 6.4 million. So folks that have asked us to potentially suspend capital, I want to make sure that everybody understands what it means if we suspended $30 million of capital. If we actually did that, we would reduce the debt service in the out years significantly below 6.4 million further down. So it would take a number of years to even enjoy the savings there. And once we did it, it's very expensive and very hard to go back, because while that might make us neutral now, let's say we went to 5.5 million in the out years, to get back up to that 7% would require, require a $1.5 million roughly expenditure increase, which is a tax increase. Right now, the debt service line is actually not a tax increase. That is the number that we spend on debt service year in and year out. If we spend the same amount of money, we're not actually taxing any resident any more or any less than we previously had. If we change the debt service line, and there's two components to it, Mr. Kimball can explain it a lot better than I can, but there's a cash component, and there's the actual debt service of it where we're paying our loan back. We utilize both. So the Board of Finance, from our recommendation, can diminish some of the cash spend, lower the cash spend, which does give us flexibility. But if we reduce the number of bonds we take out, we're potentially hamstringing this community in future years for required capital projects such as schools, roads, additional library projects, whatever it may be, that we have to do as, you know, fiduciaries of the capital in this community. So, Lisa, I really do appreciate your explanation and understand the potential minimal savings of moving out a capital project, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands we're not saving $5.5 million in folks' tax dollars next year. And that's a, that's something that's not really understood out there. And again, we could approve all these projects, and I think that's what you're going to talk about in Option B, and the tax rate doesn't go up as a result of it from purely the capital side. The operating budget is a completely different story, and we can all go through that.
So Sean, you make excellent points, and I think it is important to recognize that Option A is not actually a reduction. It's just moving things out. And when you fund it, I mean, it's a reduction in the current debt service line for this year, so there, you do capture that $200,000, but over the large picture, you're still spending the 5.8 on the senior center. It's a way to fund it in a way that meets the Board of Finance's request. So there is that out there. Option B has two components. One is an operating reduction. And I'm wondering, well, one's going to be dependent on this board's vote, which I'm hoping will be favorable. But that includes $55,000 in reduction in a shared building inspector position with the town of Bloomfield. The way that works is the town of Simsbury would fund, as you know, we recommended that we fund a full building inspector position because we were not able to hire someone at a part-time level. That's $80,000 plus health and benefits. By working with the town of Bloomfield, I want to recognize Tom Cook, who went out and negotiated with Jim Ren, their Director of Finance out there, a way to do a shared position. So the building official would actually be our employees, but we would contract out with the town of Bloomfield, who would reimburse the town for the costs of their working with him. The way that works, however, because we don't have a non-lapsing fund or a special revenue fund, that money comes in, goes directly to the general fund. So it doesn't come, so it doesn't technically reduce our operating budget, but it does reduce the amount of money that the town overall has to spend. So it's sort of an accounting specific that I wanted to make the board aware of, because it's still a savings, it just doesn't come back to us. It goes to the general fund. By us, I mean the Board of Selectmen, which it comes back to the town and all of us, however. The other part of getting to $200,000 include operating reductions. $7,000 reduction in the finance department. Again, this would use the capital budget to cover the first year of the asset management system of $5,000. Eventually, that would have to be returned to the operating budget, because you can't keep operating costs in capital in perpetuity. And that we could reduce the annual report allocation by $2,000 and go to more printing in-house instead of going out and doing a fancy glossy annual report. We may be able to do some of that, but it would be a reduction in what we're able to offer. $14,648 reduction in police to reflect a lower pay grade for a new officer replacing a retiring officer. That is something we will be able to book regardless of which option we pick, because that is actual savings that came in after our budget process. And that goes actually for the shared building, shared building inspector position. Both those two will be able to keep no matter what. It includes $13,747 in the elimination of a police clerk position. That is something I did not include in my budget. This board added it back. $2,500 reduction in planning various, as you know, the Economic Development Task Force recommended that we increase educational opportunities for our planning and land use boards and staff, and so some of that money was put in to assist with that. We can just reduce it back some. That comes out of various line items. That total is $92,895, which is not enough to get us to 200. I was not able to find 200 in the operating budget, and I did not get any recommendations from this board as to where else to cut. So that leaves us with some capital cash reductions. Sean pointed out, you can either move out bonded projects. You have to move out a large number if you're moving out a bonded project. As you saw, I'm moving out 5.3, 5.5 million. A bonded capital of two years saves you $200,000, or you can move out cash to cash. Jerry is here, and one of the things on this suggestion is, and I did consult with Jerry on this, is to delay the townwide master park plan by one year so that we would move that out by $102,000. So that's cash to cash, so that is an actual $100,000 reduction. Again, it's not an elimination, but it does move it out for this year. And then to get to $200,000, $10,000 reduction in open space improvements, and that's the Betty Hudson project. We talked with Jeff Shea as well and felt that we could accommodate that. It's not what we want to do, but we can do that. And those two combined, $92,895 plus $112,000 gets us to $204,895,000. So those are the two options that I had put before this board last time, and I open it up for discussion or any, anything else you would like us to consider at this point.
So if I could, appreciate you putting that together. As we talked about before, I think these are responsible recommendations that don't diminish core services and still deliver what I think we absolutely need, especially in the realm of the building inspector, as you've talked about and as we've heard about a number of times. That is a driver of economic development, and we need to have, and you articulated the point as well. We've got to make sure we've had, got folks out there helping get these projects online, because we've got developers that are working hard to bring them online, so it's important that we bring in that revenue. I do, I do understand the elimination of the police clerk position. We are leaving in the dispatcher, which from my understanding was their number one need. So I don't think we're leaving the police department in a tough position there, and perhaps we can explore in out years a way to restore that through alternative funding or other ways. So, but again, to the, to the capital side, I do favor Option B, because the Chairman of the Board of Finance last year did build us in, I mean, increase in the capital line item spent by, I believe, $200,000. I think in anticipation of some challenging years, because I think we went from, what, 6.5 to 6.7, Sean, or you can help me with the numbers.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago, that's correct.
So it's a little bit of increase in the cash spend, and I think was the wisdom of that we knew we were going to be in harder roads coming down to where we are today. So to my discussion previously, it puts us back to where we were previously, you know, two years ago and beyond. So I'm comfortable moving back to that position with this. We've worked really hard on the senior center. This board has had, I think, we're up to 45, maybe 50 meetings at this point. Lots of public hearings, lots of input. You know, there's, there's lots of concerns and questions about that, and my, my one response to folks is, we need to spend money on Eno, whether we do a senior center or not. The building needs to be brought up to code from an ADA standpoint. It needs to be far more accessible. As the First Selectmen pointed out earlier this year, there was a fire drill and an issue with the kiln there, and we're carrying folks out the front door because there's no way to get folks that are disabled out the front door, and that's simply not acceptable for a building where we have potentially hundreds of people a day throughout the year in there. So I think it's important that we leave the senior center improvements in there, because it's not just the senior center component, it's also very much the safety in bringing that building up to what it, what it ought to be, and I think we have a responsibility as the Board of Selectmen to do so. And to hear from the voters, at this point, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of town money already on this project. I think it's time we give folks a chance to say, yes, we want this, or no, we don't. I think it's time we give folks a chance to say, yes, we want this, or no, we don't.
So, you make an excellent point. There will be a couple, not all capital projects go on the referendum question, so sometimes voters have to vote on capital as part of our overall budget, but there will be, I think, two, Sean, that will go to referendum? Capital project? Three. They will be the...
The Rank and Pool improvements?
The Rank and Pool improvements, the Senior Center, and Henry James Memorial School. So, to Sean's point, this really becomes not our recommendation, but the people of Simsbury get to decide whether this is a project they want to pursue at this time or whether they want to delay. So, this is a good opportunity for the residents to speak to this project, whether they like it or don't like it. And, to Sean's other point, I just want to go back. The way you fund capital, even though the numbers seem large, 30 million, it still fits with, if you fund capital an equal amount every year, you get stability of capital. You do need to preserve your assets in town. You try to do it in a way so that you don't have spikes, where you're doing a $100 million project and a $5 million project. You try an even amount, and because we do capital planning, when we talk about, does it fit? We look at capital planning over a five-year period and try to plan things out so that we know that they fit, and there won't be spikes and dips. Because what you don't want in capital, in terms of best practices, are spikes and dips. You want steady consistency to preserve assets and meet community needs.
And, in fact, preserving our stability and capital planning preserves our bond rating, and that helps us with borrowing down the road. We have worked very hard with the Board of Finance and the Board of Education to stabilize the capital plan, and as everybody has said before, it's important that we try to make as little waves in that plan as possible, because that's what's going to carry us forward. It's going to help our development in town, which drives growth and our grand list. So, just cutting out a major project is not going to give us the automatic savings that it would appear to on the surface. I'd just like to echo what Sean was saying about the senior center. While I appreciate all of Mark's efforts, and he has sat with numerous committee meetings more than I have, but I spend a lot of time at Eno, and to see not just the seniors, but other members of our community struggle all through the winter to get in and out of that building. And, I have seen myself the dangerous situation that we place our seniors in just using the facilities there. I think it's important that we maintain that building, because that building, along with the library, is our community center. I mean, that, not only geographically, but programmatically, for both our seniors and the rest of our citizens. And, we need to maintain that. And, the way that Eno is situated right now, it's not fair to the people who use it every day. And, there are hundreds of them going in and out of that building every day, from our neediest citizens who go there for Cheese Day and other social service projects, or programs, I should say, to our seniors who go there for activities. It's not right, and we need to fix it.
I agree. I think, and something I think for everyone to remember is, public financing debt, our capital projects, is very different from the way we run our personal home or personal small business budgets. It's not living beyond our means. It is, as Sean and Cheryl both said, a management, it is appropriate stewardship of our assets and of our bond rating and of our credentials in the financial world as a municipality. So, to keep that consistent, responsibly so, is really important. And, I think it was hard to find these reductions. I mean, thank you for managing to find them and managing to do so in examples like sharing a position but not eliminating it, because I think we really needed that building inspector support. So, finding a way to share regionally some services was an excellent way to find savings. I'm sorry to the police that the police clerk has got to wait, but the dispatcher is still there, and that was the position that was essential for public safety, I feel. So, I think these are really good recommendations.
Thank you. So, really great comments from everyone. I do want to point out that the building inspector position is contingent upon this board passing it, Bloomfield, which is considering it tonight. I'm actually waiting on a text from Phil as to how that goes, and then, funding by both our Boards of Finance. So, it is a little contingent on things out there. Before we vote, I do want to raise an issue that was brought to my attention on Friday, that we got a call from the State DOT, who wanted to know what we're planning to do with the State DOT a lot, because as you can imagine, they are looking for revenues at the state level right now. To say they're scrambling would be an understatement. So, I did want to, I think this board has made it clear, we're done with looking at that as a site location for the senior center. Its original intent, when Linda Schofield negotiated, the option for the town of Simsbury was for us to sell it, to do an RFP or an RFQ to a developer, to do the kind of development this board would like to see, and then do a same-day closing after we've chosen someone that meets the needs of the town, and sell it back to them so that there's no out-of-cost expense for the town. And, the board, the State DOT, would kind of requested that we look into options and see whether this board would be open to having Jamie come back with an RFQ either next time or within a month, to sort of look at options. It would be something you would have the ability to look at, see if this is what you want to do at this point. Right now, because it took a legislative act to create this offer to us, it takes a legislative act to undo it. Usually, it's very hard to undo a legislative act this year. I don't know. So, I mean, so I just wanted to make this board a note, and we don't need to take a vote on that, because it's no, there's no action item required for Jamie to go ahead and put together an RFQ, but I am going to have him do that. And then, if this board is interested in it, we can do that. But, I did want to put that out there as an option, just because we're talking about capital right now.
I think it's a good idea. That was the original intent of leaving it vacant, was so it would be available for economic development.
Right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and ask Jamie to go ahead and start that RFQ draft and get it back to the board before it goes out. All right, so, is there anyone who would like to make a motion? The one thing I do want to caution this board and also members of the public, the budget is no longer the Board of Selectmen's, it's at the Board of Finance. So, we can make a recommendation to them, but at the end of the day, they have line item control over our budget and can do reductions as they see fit. They have asked for our recommendations, and I do expect them to take those recommendations seriously.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with that. So, with that, I'll make the motion that we approve Option B, which is the operating reductions as outlined, for a total of $92,895, and the additional capital cash reductions of $112 for the next, for the coming...
$112,000.
Excuse me, yes, $112,000. I'm used to my own budget, $112,000. Total reductions operating and capital cash expenditures of $204,895.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have our recommendation. Sean, can you give a copy of this to Kathy, so she has it?
She has it.
Oh, you have it? Okay. Thank you. We will now move on to approve the recommendation of Culture Parks and Recreation Commission to transition to a carry-in, carry-out policy for trash removal for town-owned parks, fields, and other properties effective July 1, 2017. I want to thank the Culture Parks and Recreation Committee and its Director, Jerry Tonner, who have actually been looking at this issue for a couple of years, invite you to come up. This is not something that they have done lightly or in the back of their hand. They have been looking at this issue, although it has not come before us, it's come before the board multiple times. They have done a two-year study, they've done trial runs, consulted with other towns that use this. And, contrary to what one might initially think, beyond cost savings, which there are some cost savings, such policies do actually tend to reduce trash in parks, increase safety, reduce illegal dumping, and is consistent with Simsbury's commitment to open space stewardship and sustainability. I'm going to ask Jerry to speak to this. We did have a few questions from members of the public, and so we'll get you those.
Thank you, Lisa. You pretty much covered a lot of the proposal, but, you know, you're right. We have looked at this probably more in response to the budget situation over the last couple of years, and as we saw reductions happening, we're trying to look at how we could better utilize our people and our resources. And, this was one that we've looked at. Obviously, it's been implemented on the state and federal level, as well as, you know, neighboring towns that have successfully implemented. So, we did look at it and internally discussed it, and we actually did it on somewhat of a trial basis in some of our smaller parks. And, in one case, one of the parks is an area that was used actively by one of our sports organizations. And, we communicated with them and told them the reasons for it, and said, we ask you to, you know, this is explained, it's a trial basis, we ask you to ask your users to cooperate. And, they said, no problem, we'll get the word out. And, they did, and there was no evidence of really any difficulty. They took out what they brought in. There was no issues on our part. It seemed to work, you know, very easily. And, I think when we explained to them particularly why we were doing it, I think it was a lot easier for them, you know, to handle. And, so, I think, you know, given, again, the limited resources that we have is probably the driving force, but I think we look at other things, sustainability, the things that we talk about as a town. I think it extends, in many cases, we're partners with many groups in our parks, whether it be our parks, our trails, our performing arts center, we have partnerships, and I think this is extending that partnership. I really believe that the organizations that use our parks and facilities will understand and will partner with us. And, as I said in the memo, they have the option to bring in barrels and receptacles, you know, on their part. Many do for special events that they may have. They still have that opportunity. But, I think for the reasons that we've talked about, I think the timing is good, and I think the Commission obviously felt the same way. I can tell you, we have, you know, many projects, when you look at 10 to 15 man-hours a week, it may not seem like much, but I can assure you, it is. We would have liked to have all the banners up by now. They're not. There are many other things along that line that need to wait. And, I think, you know, we've got to make better use of what we have, and I think this program allows us to do that.
And, just in terms of safety, people may not realize, but having trash receptacles that are full attracts bees, wasps, vermin, vectors, bears in Simsbury.
Right.
So, it actually, and also, what other towns have found, I think I sent an article to members of this board, is that when you reduce the trash receptacles, you reduce the amount of illegal dumping that occurs. Sometimes, people see a public trash can, and they bring their trash from other places and put it there. And, so, some, many places have found that the parks are actually cleaner, because they aren't, the trash cans aren't overflowing, there aren't animals attracted to it, it smells less. So, for some, you know, I would say, if it doesn't work out, this is not one and done, this is something we'll be constantly evaluating. As to your point, different organizations, different sports groups have the opportunity of managing trash if they want to. Let's open it up to questions. Sean?
So, just one question. My only concern would be, are the Little League fields covered by this?
They wouldn't be, yeah.
So, I mean, they have concessions there, so...
And, they currently, you know, contract.
They do.
Yeah, so, it would just be an extension of what they're...
Excellent, okay. That was my only concern, because they're actually producing something.
No, well, I think it is a different dynamic when you've got, you know, concessions, and that's why we look at the golf course a little bit differently, right? That's not what people are bringing in, it's what they're buying from one of our vendors and taking, you know, into the park. So, we've got to look at that a little bit differently.
Okay, now that makes sense, Jerry. Thank you.
Cheryl?
I read up a little bit on it when I saw your submission, and I think it's a good idea. And, what I found was, even the National Park Service and many other state park organizations support this policy. Part of the reason being, aside from what you've already outlined, that it's better for wildlife management, that animals come to rely on eating out of our trash cans, and that reduces their ability to function in the wild, as they should, and it spreads disease and other pests, ticks, and all sorts of things to local populations. So, it really is an environmental stewardship issue. Trash cans in parks like trails and things like that, you know, it affects the beauty of the park, too, to have a trash receptacle that's left overflowing and attracting animals that shouldn't be there, aside from bees and wasps and all those other things. So, it is a national trend to go over to this. It also encourages more recycling. People tend to carry in reusable and recyclable containers and recycle them themselves, and it's a better stewardship of the environment all around.
Thank you. I just ask members of the public to keep, if you want to have your conversation, you're welcome to do so, but please take it outside so that the board can continue with their deliberations.
Elaine?
I just want to follow on what Cheryl was saying about wildlife. I lived in Alaska for a couple of years in the '90s, and they started doing this, because they had studied the bear population. We were having problems with bears, having more and more frequent, close interactions with people, to the point that we had actual physical injury and sometimes deaths of individuals because of bears, and we've been lucky enough that we have not had that here. And, one thing they found was that having a garbage can teaches the bears, there is a constant supply of yummy garbage to eat. So, not having a single holding pen for a bunch of yummy garbage is actually also a public safety matter in coexisting with our bears and probably also our coyote population, so...
Is there any other comments from the board? With that, may I have a motion to approve the recommendation of the Culture Parks and Recreation Commission to transition to a carry-in, carry-out policy for trash removal for town-owned parks, fields, and other properties effective July 1, 2017.
So, may I?
Do you have a second?
Second.
I do want to point out, Jerry will be doing an extensive communications campaign with this, letting sporting groups know, letting people who use the trails regularly. And, town news and announcement, it'll be on the website, so there will be a substantial... And, I see Sloan is here, and I'm hoping she'll do a story on this to help us get the word out. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jerry, and please extend our thanks to your Commission for your work on this.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry about your capital. You have before you a motion to authorize the First Selectmen to enter to an agreement for shared professional services with the town of Bloomfield for a deputy building official. As you know, I am not authorized to act on my own, despite some protestations to the contrary. It does require Board of Selectmen approval to do actions like this. During the past year, the town of Simsbury worked to hire a part-time building official to assist our current building official with a steadily increasing workload. Due to a lack of supply of building officials, if you can believe it or not, there is a lack of supply of building officials who are qualified. We have not been successful in hiring a part-time position. Our current budget proposal adopted by this board includes a full-time deputy. The town of Bloomfield was also in need of a part-time building official and found similar difficulties in hiring part-time. The attached agreement, which you have in your packet, for shared professional services was negotiated between the two towns and reviewed by council. Simsbury will be the sole employer of the deputy building official and will utilize the official for more than half of the workweek, on average. The rest of the building official services will be contracted out to Bloomfield for the balance. Bloomfield will pay the town a proportionate amount of the total actual costs, which includes salary and benefits, estimated at $54,000. This agreement is conditioned upon the approvals of this board, Bloomfield's board, and the funding of the position, and will not be filled until at least July 2017, at the earliest. Funds, as I mentioned earlier, received from Bloomfield will be deposited in the general fund. So, first of all, I'd like to thank Tom, who did a lot of the work on getting the contract written with Jim Ren of Bloomfield, and also Phil Shank, who worked closely with me in pursuing this. So, I open it up to questions from this board.
Lisa, what is the order of events here? Do we approve this, and then Bloomfield approves it, or is it...
They're doing it contemporaneously. So, this, and the contract is dependent, I'm looking to see if I have anything from Phil. The contract is dependent on this board's approval, Bloomfield's board's approval, the Board of Finance's approval, and a passing of referendum. So, there are lots of contingencies built into it, absolutely.
And, if any one of those things fails to happen, then it all fails.
Correct.
Okay, and we're back to the drawing board.
Right. I did also, I mean, I did reach out to all members of the Farmington Valley Collaborative to look for a sharing of this position, and Bloomfield was the one who had the capacity at the time.
I think it's a good idea.
Good compromise, I think. Thank you for seeking that out.
Any other comments on that? Any other comments on that? Sean?
I do, but I'll leave it alone. I thought we worked 40 hours on this thing, but that's okay. Contract says 35.
Yeah.
That's correct. I think it's written correctly. That's a unit contract provision.
That's why I said I'd leave it alone.
Yeah.
We'll move on.
Thank you. All right.
This country.
May I have a motion to authorize the first selectman to enter into an agreement for shared professional services with the town of Bloomfield for a deputy building official pending needed approvals?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We will go on to appointments and resignations. Very happy to have Town Engineer here. We are looking to appoint Jerome Shea, Town Engineer, to the Board of Directors of the Farmington Valley Health District for a term of three years, effective May 8, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You have in your packets the minutes of the regular meeting of April 24, 2017. Please let me know if you have any changes. If not, we will go ahead and make these minutes final. We want a few minutes to read them.
Good.
Okay, seeing none. Does anyone have any selectmen and liaison? Cheryl, why don't you give an update on the Community for Care?
Absolutely. So this Wednesday, the day after tomorrow, the Community for Care is hosting the Harlem Rockets versus the Simsbury Dream Team, which is all in place to be coached by our very own Matt Curtis. We are very much looking forward to giving the community an opportunity to see a great basketball game. That will be a lot of fun, and during the game, we will have community health providers and other mental health resource providers there, and they will have information available to the public. We will also have providers of positive activities for kids of all ages, in an effort to provide a positive alternative to drug and alcohol use, and some of those providers will be the Heart School of Music, Journey to Yoga, the YMCA. We are, you know, the Youth Services Board is coming. We're very much looking forward to just providing information, giving kids some options that they might not have been aware of. We will also have providers there, like family therapists and recovery specialists, if anybody would like to avail themselves of information along those lines, and we will have all sorts of helpful hints and encouraging positive motivation from the teams, which I think will be a great way to promote a positive message here.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work on behalf of you and Woody and the members, Chris, the members of the Community for Care.
Thank you.
Putting this together.
So 6:00 PM, Simsbury High School, be there.
Exciting. Now it is, and we appreciate the efforts there. Any other updates?
We're getting to the time of year. Things are picking up again with tourism, lots of local events, as we all had fun at the flea market in Smoresport, and I, for the second year in a row, managed to sunburn my shoulders because it was cool but sunny. That hopefully won't be an annual tradition, but I can't make any promises. Historical Society has a weekend coming up, first weekend in June, with a garden party and local artists, and also a tour of historic homes, which we mentioned during the Hometown Heroes. Ica Scully has been putting that together, and that will be an exciting event. Lots of other upcoming events, including our wonderful Memorial Day Parade coming up in the next few weeks, so look at the first selectwoman's report, and it's all there.
And we can also remind folks to look at the community calendar, and if you could, when you go to tourism, remind the Historical Society to post their events there.
I will, I will. All those organizations have a lot of things going on, especially this is, it's gearing up for the spring events, so a lot going on in town.
There is. And Sean?
Just a quick one. We have a public safety meeting on next Thursday, so if there's any items that folks would like addressed there, we're going to be finalizing the agenda. We are going to be revisiting the PAC Storm contingency plan in the event, you know, who calls it when there's a thunderstorm coming in, et cetera, so making sure that folks are safe down there, especially when we have large numbers of people in the beautiful summer sunshine that then can quickly get rainy. And additionally, also just to remind folks, obviously with the good weather and it being Bike Month, please slow down in our neighborhoods. You know, there's the popular drive, like your kids live here. Well, we all live in this town, so your kids do live here, so please make sure that you're obeying the speed limit and thinking about it, because the little ones on the bikes are whipping around, and some of us walking around, too, so please do slow down, because it's only going to take a minute more to get to wherever you're going, so.
Thank you for that reminder.
And then maybe actually stop at stop signs.
Yes, that would be, that would be good as, that would be good as well.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for those updates. May I have a motion pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206D concerning the selection of a site lease sale purchase of real estate in connection with the redesign of the senior center to adjourn into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will now adjourn to executive session.